Excuse me, even though it's not a meeting. I'd like to start with the presentations, please.
Sure, so we'll just run on the order that was on the proposed agenda. So we would start with the town clerks department, which looking at page eighty-four in your budget book. The total budget for the town clerk is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, which is a four thousand, fifty-two dollar increase. Take it away, Bonnie.
Let's see. Is that good?
I can hear you.
You can, you can hear me?
I can hear you now.
All right. Let's start this off. All right. Good evening, mayor, councilors. I am Bonnie Armstrong, the town clerk for South Windsor. My office is essentially the records, management, and information center for the town and is responsible for performing hundreds of different functions. To list just a few of our functions. We are responsible for recording and maintaining the town's land records, which date back to eighteen forty-five. We maintain the town's vital records, births, deaths, and marriages. We are an integral part of the election process and work in conjunction with the registrars voters. And we issue or maintain dog licenses, liquor licenses, notary appointments, claims, cemetery deeds, burial permits, and the town's ordinance, so that's just to name a few. Aside from our salaries, our budget is comprised mainly of advertising expenses for state mandated legal notices, vendor fees for our land record system, and our town ordinance online system, and for printing expenses for elections and dog licensing supplies. Thank you for your time tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is really informal.
Okay. Okay. Just the grand total of everything that your department does and follow state statutes, like a hundred and fifty-seven or something, right?
Correct.
Massive.
Massive.
Appreciate you and your staff for everything that they do. And I'm familiar with what you do because I used to do that in Vernon Assistant Town Clerk. So I totally appreciate everything and all the information that you keep on the history of our community and our town and all the births dating way back when and deaths and everything else. So thank you so much for all of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Okay, next department would be human services. I'm going to run through a couple of different parts because there's a couple of different parts to that budget as well. Under human services administration, we have a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. That's a two thousand, nine hundred and five dollar decrease. Under youth and family services, we have three, a budget of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. That's a seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollar increase. And adult and senior services. I don't think there's no budget associated with that. And I think that might be it. Am I right? All right. For which? I didn't see a budget for it. Oh, here it is. Yep, I'm sorry. So your adult and senior is a five hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollar budget, which is an eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollar increase. I'm looking at page two oh four. I think there's only the three. Okay, so transportation. Yep, so I got trans. Hang on, let me move through this.
Um, V N H S. And transportation.
V N A?
Yep.
And transportation?
Yes.
So transportation's page two oh eight. That's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, which is a sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollar decrease. And if I can get my fingers to work here. We also have sheltered workshops, which is a five thousand dollar budget, which is flat. And your visiting nurse and community care, which is one thousand dollars, which is a four thousand, five hundred dollar decrease. There we go. And that's what we got. So take it away.
All right, well, thank you for having us. I'm Andrea Cofrancesco, the Director of Human Services, and Liz Langivan is here with me. She oversees the Youth and Family Services Division of Human Services. The other division is Adult and Senior. And then, as Mike mentioned, we do have those other portions of the budget as well. We basically, in a nutshell, we help people. We serve people of all ages between parent education, teen center, youth counseling, seniors, people with disabilities, low-income families, just regular adults looking for services for their aging parent, et cetera, et cetera. Of course, the senior center, transportation, all that kind of good stuff. I think a lot of you are already kind of familiar with what we do. And between all of those budgets, we came in at less than the zero percent that we were supposed to come at. So if you have any questions, I did my job. Liz did her job.
So, thank you, Andre. You do, you do a great job.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that every time I go into the community center, it's just, it's amazing the activity that you manage. Is there a way to bolster up revenue?
Well, I think I know what you're getting at, and that's those rentals, right?
Would pay a little more.
Um, I mean, revenue, I mean, you know, a lot of what we do is we do, we do fundraising for certain things. I mean, most of our programs are covered by the cost of fees. So it's not like it's really costing a lot to, to run the teen center or the senior center, except for just primarily staff. But I do write grants. We're getting a grant for a new minivan. It's not necessarily revenue, but it's certainly saving the town money. Liz oversees a handful of grants to help offset the costs of her program supplies and services. We're utilizing a lot of ARPA funds to provide help with the mental health services. Just receiving, just wrote a grant for a new bus that hopefully we will get. But we're also getting a new bus in July that's a hundred percent funded by a grant, which is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, I mean, revenue, other than increasing rentals, which, you know, I mean, it's out there, people, it's very busy. Rentals are busy. There's not really a way to increase revenue.
How are you doing with volunteers?
We have two hundred volunteers within our programs. We utilize them to provide a lot of assistance, whether it's friendly shopping, delivering meals on wheels, being greeters, helping with program setup, helping in the kitchen, that kind of thing.
Do you have to hire a full-time staff to manage the volunteers, or?
Well, that would be nice, but I right now, no. I, I can't see asking for that. I mean, it's a lot of work, but I have different staff that manage the different areas. So it's kind of like broken up. It's not like one point person. I'm kind of the start, and then I kind of farm people off to different staff based on the program. Like case workers oversee the friendly shopper program. I have a kitchen person that oversees the meals on wheels volunteers, et cetera.
Great job of keeping under budget.
Thank you.
I'm not a mathematician, and Lord help me figure this out. And I'm looking at page one ninety-five, the reduction of five thousand dollars. But then I'm looking over here at the two thousand, nine hundred and five. Do the, can, that was the increase. And then there's a decrease of five thousand, which leaves the budget at two thousand, nine hundred and five. But if you add those two together, oh, two thousand, nine hundred and five and two thousand, ninety-five. There you go. That's why I would.
I'm glad I could help you.
There you go. I caught it. I reread it. I caught it. Thank you. Now, okay, give me kudos, golden star mathematician, got it. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do and everyone that you help in our community. Both of you, appreciate you and your departments.
Thank you.
And I love the senior center now that I can go.
It's a great place to be. Any other questions?
So again, I think you've done a great job as well. But question I have is when you're just rattling off those grants that you got, which is phenomenal, do we, like, tell the public about that somewhere? Or is there some way we can highlight that? I mean, if you, to get a new bus for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is a huge savings. So, you know, is there something that we can do to make sure that our residents know? That's awesome.
Yeah, so, I mean, well, I do post things on Facebook, and I share that message board, which has ten thousand followers on each. So I really try to, like, educate people about that. And I think, well, we also receive every year thirty-three thousand dollars through, for transportation through the state, and that's in the budget book. Like, it actually lists it somewhere. Patty had showed me, like, in the beginning, like, revenue. So that's actually another one I didn't mention. But I don't think there's a place in the budget book, per se, unless it's, unless I stated it in the.
We don't talk about grants in the budget book, but as typically as we do receive new grants that we haven't received in the past, we'll bring those forward to the council and announce them at the council when we do receive them, so.
And it's always in the town manager reports.
Yeah, some of, some of the grants that we receive are kind of annual ones that we typically go after. Like, the bus one, I think, is every other year. Then we typically go after that and some things. So we'll, we'll come back to you and let you know we got the bus grant again, or we got the emergency management grant again, things of that nature. But off, off the cuff ones that are a little different, that we don't typically get, we will try to make a little bit of a bigger deal out of.
I think Carolyn Carey's point is she wants to advertise the fact that we're not just trying to gouge people for money, that you folks are doing the best you can to find money wherever you can.
That would be correct.
You're doing your job, and we're supporting you, and so we want the public to know that.
Yeah, and I, and I hundred percent agree. That's why we, we post it as much as we can. We have a couple of different Facebook pages that we manage. And in the town manager report, that's online, and it's also sent out now via email through Constant Contact. So I do want to make note of one thing. The bus that we're getting in July is a hundred percent funded because of the ARPA grant norm, that the state got. But normally, the town's responsibility is twenty percent. And so the grant that I just wrote, that I won't know unless, until we get it, I'll have to come up with thirty thousand.
Didn't you do that once, one year already?
Typically. It's always twenty percent, and it's usually fifteen thousand, but the bus, the cost of. When I first wrote the bus grant in twenty twenty-one, this is how long it's taken to get it. It was eighty thousand dollars, and now it's like one thirty-eight. So they're covering it a hundred percent, but one year we weren't allowed to apply because those funds from that year were going to offset the increase in those buses. But normally, it's not a hundred percent funded. It's only eighty percent. Just to let you know, because if I do get that grant, I'll be, I'll be coming to you. Contingency.
But at least you keep going after grants to help us get some funding.
And you know, this, this minivan that we're getting from the other ARPA funds, which is through the State Unit on Aging, it's a seventy-two thousand dollar minivan that's equipped with a wheelchair lift, doesn't require the, a driver with a C D L, which is going to be super helpful, less gas, easier navigating around cities and stuff.
That's the one for doctor's appointments and things like that?
Yes, yes. We're getting that. We're getting sixty-two thousand dollar grant, and it's going to cost about ten thousand. And I just, tonight, before coming here, wrote letters to the Rotary Club and the South Windsor Community Foundation to try to get the other ten thousand that I need. So, you know, they're very supportive of our department and our services, and I don't anticipate needing any additional funds for that ten thousand. Because we do, are, we are very conscious of the budget and taxpayers. And that's why at the senior center, we use real mugs instead of, this is just one little thing, because we use real mugs to save money and the environment. So every little bit helps.
Can we ask you about the other departments while you're here, both of you? I didn't know if you guys are ready to move on to youth and family?
Yeah, anything you want.
Okay.
Anything.
Okay, youth and family with the increase of the seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-four rate? That's what I have in the budget book. And, and to be quite frank and honest, are we touching the lives of the children within our community with mental health services and families with mental health services as a result of COVID and various things that we have? And, and maybe even some financial stuff that folks may have? Are we really, we're really getting in there and doing a good job with that? I don't doubt it. I'm just asking. You guys are busy.
Yeah, so I'll let Liz answer that in a second, but I want to mention that a hundred thousand dollars we got from ARPA, that's financially helping people with expenses related to COVID nineteen. And then we got three hundred thousand from ARPA to fund the youth counselors, which is ending at the end of this year.
Okay.
So that's why in the youth and family budget, it's reflected a little bit of an increase because we want to take a part-time person, bump her up, was it seven hours? So that way, because it's done. In December thirty-first.
Right.
And you wanted to speak a little bit about the numbers?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Give us some numbers and let us know.
So I'll, I'll just tell you, so through the ARPA grant, we've been able to bring on, we've been actually able to add on additional five hours for part-time L C S W, and then bring on an additional four therapists to meet the needs of youth. And then we're contracting services with inter-community mental health. And they come into the community center, and they provide mental health services for adults, senior citizens, as well as youth. So it's been a tremendous help. We're really sad that the ARPA funding is going to be ending at the end of the year because that is going to be a difficult transition, I think, for a lot of people to not have that service provided to them.
So it's the end of the year, not the end of the fiscal year, so?
Correct.
December.
Okay.
And how much would you need to continue that until the next budget?
Well.
What, four hundred thousand, you said? The three and the one?
So we've had the three hundred thousand for what?
For three years.
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
For, yeah, for three years, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, at the end of this year, that three hundred thousand dollar cut is going to reduce mental health staff by what?
So we won't have the contracted services with inter-community any longer. And that is, let's see, so.
About forty-five people.
Yeah, forty-five people will not be able to be provided mental health services after the ARPA funding is completed.
Want to mention the transition to private insurance?
Yeah, so we're going to start the process in the summer of helping each person that is meeting with someone through the ARPA funding to find someone in the community, whether that be through telehealth or in person, that maybe accepts their health insurance.
That's sad. That's sad, because once you get established.
Right.
It's hard to get reestablished.
Correct.
Oh, that's so sad. That's very heartbreaking. Will you still be able to, with what we have in this budget, be able to meet the needs of our community besides the inter-community health services with the staff that we have?
We will do the best that we can with what we have. I will say that. But we won't be able to provide services for senior citizens and adults like we currently are doing through the ARPA funding.
I have to be honest, that's one of my biggest concerns with our community is the mental health status of folks with going through so much with the economy or with COVID or jobs or whatever. That's one of my biggest concerns, within the school systems and within our community.
I think it's, if people don't see it every day, they don't understand. I think people are like, well, you have, that's what you have health insurance for. You can find someone who accepts your health insurance, and you can see them. But there's a lot of hurdles for kids, for adults, for seniors. Some people are homebound, they can't get out. Some people can't afford the co-pay for you.
And it's also difficult to find a provider.
It is difficult to find a provider, yeah.
They're booked, or they're not taking you, or whatever the case may be, it's very difficult.
Right.
So I know there's a lot going on within our community, and that's very sad. Sorry to hear that. And I, I wish you guys the best, and I know you'll, you'll take care of everyone that you possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, but I do have a comment regarding Carolyn's comments notifying, let everybody know that you're. Is there anything you can put in the newsletter that the bus?
About the bus?
Was through a grant or any?
Yeah.
Because I think that would be a good place to put it as well.
No, that's a great idea, and that goes out to twenty-two hundred people. So, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah. Be happy to.
The V, I'm sorry, you're done?
No, go ahead.
Okay. The V N A, I know that we, you reduce it by forty-five hundred. Isn't that like a standard cost that we have to pay for the V N A? I know you call, in the past, you've said that, that we have to contribute.
Yeah, so the visiting nurses during COVID, they disbanded their community outreach program. So when we reopened, it was really hard to find a nurse that would come in and do. That's, it's, it's covering the clinic at the senior center. We were able to get them to donate their services once a month. And so we hadn't really needed to tap into that, which is why I was able to reduce it. But they were just bought out by Yale. And they're not sure yet of what they can continue doing.
Okay, I'm just going to go down the list. And the transportation is reduced by sixteen thousand due to?
That was as a result of the extra money that I had in there to cover the cost of the bus.
Got it. And then the adult and senior services, the increase of eleven thousand is for the?
Uh, the salary increases.
Yep, and sheltered workshop, that's a standard five thousand.
Correct.
That's always, gotcha. Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys. And best of luck with everything.
Thank you.
All right, we're working, we're going to move on to the health department. Starts on page eighty-six. The financials are on one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine. Total budget's two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. It's a sixty-five dollar increase.
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Councilors. I'm Melissa Pierce, Director of Health for the Health Department. You guys can all hear me fine, correct? Okay, perfect. So we are in charge of a myriad of different things. Our core functions as the Health Department would be environmental health investigations and inspections. So housing inspections, septic systems, pools, all of the licensed facilities that we have in town. We do plan reviews and construction inspections in conjunction with the building officials and the fire marshal's office, and then disease transmission prevention and mitigation. So those are our main functions that we try to focus on. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Sixty-five dollar increase, wow.
And that's for what? The sixty-five dollar increase is for what? A laptop, like, what? I don't know.
I think it balances out of some, some salary or something. I.
Okay, sure, we'll go with that.
Can't tell you exactly where the sixty-five dollars comes from.
Hey, no worries. That's how much the mayor makes a month, by the way. Go ahead.
If you go to page one ninety-one, you can see that there was a request for a new person in the budget, and I ended up decreasing that new person. The sixty-five dollars, I believe, accounts for salary increases to the other employees that are in the department.
Okay, I see that. Yeah, I understand. We had, in the present budget right now, don't we have the money for a person? Didn't we approve that in last year's budget?
No, we did not approve an additional person for the Health Department last year.
We didn't? Well, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay.
You know, we're going to continue to do the best that we can with the staff that we have because it's just two of you.
You know what I think it was? You know what I think it was? Didn't, do we still have the position for the Planning Department with the Assistant Planner?
That, that's the position that was.
That's the one that we have presently in this, this budget?
Yeah, there's a position in this budget.
And still seeking someone out for that. And then this, this budget right now in this book was where we were going to add your person. We were going to add a new person to our staff each year, so apparently it's not going to happen this year. I'm sorry for that, because I know you're busy, and I know you can't hire somebody for sixty-five dollars, so. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for what you do and your master's degree and accomplishments. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions?
No. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to planning, which is on page sixty-one. And actually, you just realized, you said that you can't hire somebody for sixty-five dollars, but you could get a mayor, so I just want to point that out.
That's after taxes, too.
That's after taxes, too. So page sixty-one, for the Planning Department, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. It's a twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollar decrease. Take it away, Michelle.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Leip. I'm the Director of Planning. I'm here tonight to talk to you about my budget. We are the department that most people come to visit whenever they want to do anything on their property. So we're the land use department. We deal with residents on a daily basis. We deal with developers, attorneys, anybody that wants to, to do something. We advise them as to what the rules and regulations might be. We also are a department that provides staff to the land use agencies. I think I counted somewhere about fifty-plus commission meetings that my staff attended last year. We, we're a staff of three. We are now a staff of four. You're correct in that you did put in a planning position last year. It kind of got changed a little bit during the course, and we did hire an Assistant Planner, Justin Russo. He started work, he's in his third work, third week here. So I will be glad to have him come and meet you all at some time. We're thrilled to have him. His background is in landscape architecture, so he brings a little bit of that into our department. So we're real thrilled, and I'm happy to say we've offered and someone has accepted the position for our Environmental Planner with the hopes of having that person start at the end of the month. So hopefully, May first, we will be a fully staffed department again, going in plus one. And I'm, thank you for all the support that you've given to our department to do that. And thus, I think that's probably why the budget reduction is because. why the budget reduction is, because we were kind of salary adjustments and whatnot during the course of hiring. Um, as you know, Jeff Folger, after twenty-nine years, retired from the town at the end of February.
That's a loss.
So, yeah, that, it's a huge loss for us, but we're excited with, um, some new young, um, faces that are sprinkled around the town hall, and all of them excited to learn about the land use process and how they can get involved in the community. So, um, I'm hoping with a little bit more capacity in our department, we'll be able to, be able to deliver more outreach in the Education Department, um, you know, uh, environmental issues, helping scouts and, and other projects. So, um, those are some of the goals that we have for this year, and I just want to just briefly comment, uh, over this past year, um, we were very successful in our department in the open space, um, master plan was updated, so we have a current plan. The Inland Welton's regulations were updated. We, uh, finished our affordable housing plan. We now have the Plan of Conservation Development at the point that it's in its sixty-five day comment period as of Tuesday night. So we've, um, with our lean staff, we did a lot this past year. So I, I look forward to having some of those regulations and things already in place, so now we can really get into doing some implementation of some of the things that we're, we're hoping to accomplish. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Of course you do.
How long have you been here, Michelle?
Um, I was here thirty-seven years in January.
Wow.
God bless you. I moved back home thirty years ago, so I recall you being here when I first moved back home. I want to thank you for you and your department and all the work that you've done over the thirty-seven years. And I have one question for you. Can you breathe a little bit more sigh of relief now that you have the other staff?
I am thrilled in, in, um, I'm really thrilled because they're excited to be here and they're learning quickly, and there's a lot going on in South Windsor. You know, you don't...
Yes, I know.
You don't get to be a planner, um, always in a place that's as dynamic as this, so I think, um, we can really, um, encourage them to, to stay with us for some time.
And I know you, you're going to be with us a few more years before you choose to retire, but at least you'll be able to retire knowing that your department is, I'm excited to see the department flourish.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, after how many years when it was just you and Marcia, and it was...
And she learned under the best, right?
And, yeah, and it's, and it's, I'm so happy to see that department flourish.
Hopefully we won't have to be so reactionary. Can we be a little bit more...
Right, right.
I, I always tell my staff, "There are no planning emergencies," so, so we will keep that in mind as we move forward.
But I, I think you're going to have a little bit more peace of mind when you go to choose to retire, and I'm happy for you for that, and I want to thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Carolyn?
I just wanted to say, I think you did an awesome job this past year. You got a lot accomplished from the Affordable Housing Plan to all the new regulations to protect the town, and with all the challenges that came through planning, so I really want on.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Marcia. Marcia, she's, I got Marcia on my mind, see?
Haven't been called that in a long time, but thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Michelle.
All right, we're moving on to the Library. With a one million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, twenty-seven dollar budget, that's an eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollar increase. Um, just as a slight narrative, just so everybody's aware, I did decrease that department requested budget by forty-six thousand, two hundred and six dollars. This decrease comes from removing additional non-contractual raises of two dollars an hour from full-time salaries and removing twenty thousand dollars from the operating materials line item. Um, and just as, as an aside, I think as you look through the pages in the budget book for this department, it's a little different since they were a grant-funded agency prior to the budget in, through the beginning of the budget process, and since then, uh, the council's passed its ordinance and they're now a town department. So we're kind of in that limbo stage between, uh, trying to create them, push them into becoming a more, more of a town department, more in line. So, uh, this is kind of representative of that scenario. Go ahead and take it away, Kevin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for, uh, taking your time to, uh, to be with us tonight. Um, so my comments are going to be a little bit longer than some of the other departments just because I want to walk through a little bit where, where I was coming from, um, where myself and the board were coming from with our initial request, and just try to, uh, to clarify, um, some of what, some of the town manager was speaking about. Um, so hopefully, hopefully we can, um, we can do that. So the, uh, South Windsor Public Library provides support for, um, the literacy, educational, and informational needs for the town of South Windsor, um, where the building itself is open for sixty-two point five hours each week. That's across all seven days, six days in the summer. We provide lots of different services, including research assistance, technology, uh, instruction, public computer use, uh, study space rental, meeting room rental, um, a whole calendar of incredible programs, and also access to a collection of a hundred and forty-two thousand physical items and over a million digital items that anybody has access to with a library card. All of that is overseen by eleven full-time staff members and eighteen part-time staff members. So it's, it's been kind of an interesting budget year for the library. Um, I took over this position last July, and, um, when I, when I initially stepped into the role, I was under the impression that, um, that fiscally we were, we were in very solid ground. Um, after I was in the position for a couple of weeks, it became apparent to me that, um, under, under normal spending, uh, circumstances, we were going to end up about a hundred thousand dollars over budget by the end of this fiscal year. And, um, that was for a couple of reasons. Uh, the first one was that we had a, we had a large, um, unbudgeted-for, uh, expense, um, for benefits payout that, that would cost between forty-two and forty-five and sixty-two thousand dollars, depending on how you look at it. And, um, the second piece of that item was that, uh, the budget was, uh, cut fifty thousand dollars for this current fiscal year, um, and the, the spending plan hadn't been adjusted to make up for that. So, um, so we've been making some hard-to-spending decisions kind of all year round to try and make those ends meet, and I just wanted to, to kind of let you know that as we're, we're going into this whole conversation. Um, you can see, um, through the, the budget commentary, some of the, uh, services that we've already cut out of our, um, operations budget. So that's our, um, that's library materials, so that's all the, the books, the databases, the magazine subscriptions, access to eBooks, e-audio books. Um, we cut that down as of January, about fifty-six thousand dollars from where we had spent the previous year, which is about thirty percent of that entire line item, um, uh, which, which is great. Um, it's, patrons weren't always happy to see that some services had been reduced and that there weren't quite as many new books on the shelf as that they were accustomed to, but we were working very hard to fill that hole. So unfortunately, fifty-seven thousand dollars does not fill a hundred thousand dollar hole. Um, so we needed to, we needed to figure out how to get the, the rest of that to make ends meet. Uh, we had an individual leave, uh, one of our positions in October, uh, one of the positions that, that was actually empty for several years, um, the L. Library Assistant Three position. Um, and we've had to leave that position empty in Children's Services for the last six months just to kind of make up for, make up for that shortfall. So we should be all good, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to getting that position listed and getting Children's Services back up to, back up to full strength because the summer is really our busiest time of year. So, um, all of these things are kind of swirling around my head, and the head of the, the Library Board of Trustees, as we were putting together our budget request, um, in December, January, and they were, they were still the governing board of the, uh, the department at that time. So I come to you tonight asking for an increase of eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's a one-point-five percent, a five, six percent increase. Um, and I, we did take the zero percent, um, mandate very seriously, and I can tell you that we worked very hard to get as close to that as we could, and I feel that we, e- even though we failed to get all the way to zero, I feel that we, we cut as much as we could without having a, uh, significant reduction in the quality of services that the members of the community are accustomed to. So in order to get down to zero, we would have had to offset the budget by about forty-two thousand dollars. Um, that comes from staff increases and it comes from office equipment. Um, so as far as staff increases go, uh, the, across the board, um, increase was thirty, about thirty thousand dollars for the library. Our, our budget is eighty-six percent personnel, so as you're kind of having a flat increase across the board there, um, it becomes larger as your percentage becomes larger, and also there's less of the budget remaining from which to try and make up for, for that increase. Um, and then we also have a couple of office equipment items that we need to have replaced. Um, our, uh, the projector screen, that's in our friend's room, which is the main programming space in the library, um, has been on its last legs for a couple of years now. The material that's ma- making up of the screen is, uh, disintegrating in a way that's leaving it kind of sticky, like it's a sticky residue, so it won't raise and lower appropriately. Um, and we've had, we've had people out to come and service it a couple of times, and it feels like we're just, we would just be throwing money at a problem that's not going to fix itself, so we think it'd be better to replace that. That's an eight thousand dollar replacement, and additionally, we're looking to replace seven staff computers this year. Um, those computers are about seven years old, and we're working on getting on a replacement schedule. We'd like to be on at least five years for public and staff computers. Um, we replaced seven of them this fiscal year. That cost a little under ten thousand dollars. I, I'm anticipating it costing the same this year, and we're, we're doing our best to offset that with a grant that we receive from the State Library every year for participating in the deliberate program. Um, that's normally about forty-five hundred dollars. It varies a little bit year to year, but it'll eat up a chunk of about half of the cost of those computers. Um, outside of those increases, I was able to make about twenty-four thousand dollars worth of reductions. Um, the largest reduction and the most painful reduction to make was the, was, um, taking the business manager, the, uh, the business manager position from a full-time position to a part-time position at the library. Um, so we, I understand there's going to be, um, some efficiencies as we become more enmeshed in the town, um, but we will feel, we will feel the, uh, loss of hours from that individual. We are, we, we don't have too many staff over at the library, so we, we can always use more man-hours. Um, additionally, I was able to keep the part-time staffing budget completely level, um, despite, despite including the, uh, the increases for everybody, and that's just more in line with our part-time spending. Um, as I just said, we, we could certainly use a few more staff hours here and there, but I wanted to make sure that I wasn't, um, cannibalizing the, uh, the, um, operations budget too much. I want to make sure we have the, the funds to be able to put items on the shelf and not take everything just out of that line. And then finally, we're saving about three thousand dollars by moving over to a voice-over IP phone system, um, the same one that the town has, um, and we're very excited for that. It's much more fully featured than what we're, we're used to. So with that, thanks for taking a few minutes to listen. Um, one last thing I want to say is that, um, unfortunately, um, libraries are most needed and well-used by the communities during the time periods when they're least able to support the libraries financially. Um, we know we're going through kind of a rough time with inflation, and everybody's kind of struggling to make ends meet at home, and what that means is they're leaning on services like the library more than they might have in the past. So we're seeing this year already, our, our circulation numbers are up about thirteen percent, and we have a, an increase of about twelve percent of people just entering, coming in the building and using our services every day. So as the community needs us, I just would like you to keep that in mind, that we want to try and be able to continue to offer them a very high level of, uh, library services and in so much as we can afford to do so. So if you have any questions, be happy to try and answer them.
Do you see usage of the library on Saturdays and Sundays picking up?
It's pretty level with what it is during the week. Um, it's, it's not like, there's not particularly a slower time or, uh, a more busy time, like if there, if there were a day that we could push more hours, um, or have less hours, but it's, they're, they're pretty comparable to weekdays, I would say.
Was on, was it, you close on Saturdays and Sundays, what, four o'clock?
Um, four-thirty.
Four-thirty, okay.
So Sundays, we're not open in the morning. We don't open till one, but Saturdays, we're open from nine to four-thirty.
Okay.
So we have pretty limited hours on Sundays. It's, you know, just because you never know what people's availability are, so we like to be here seven days a week if we can, um, but it is a pretty narrow day. There, just three and a half hours.
And on the, uh, part-time, what's the average hours for part-time? Is that what the, the twenty-four, seven, up to twenty-four, seventy-five, or?
Um, well, as high as that, I wouldn't say that's what most people are working.
Okay.
Probably most people are working more in like the twelve to fifteen range. Um, and a lot of those individuals, that's just kind of what they, what they'd like to be at, that fits their lifestyle. We do have a handful of people that are kind of right at that twenty-four, five line and just want as many hours as we can throw at them, but we, we want to keep them below the benefits line if we can.
Okay, thank you.
Is there very much overtime pay?
Uh, there's zero overtime pay.
Good, good, good. Um, so you're not fully staffed. You have that one youth position available, correct?
Yes, we do, yeah.
And that's in the budget?
That is budgeted for, yes.
Okay. I- is there any chance to, um, I'm one of those who are sad that the, uh, the Hoopla budget is so, so down. As you know, I've talked to you about that before. My fiancee lives in a small town in New York, fifty-seven hundred people. Her Hoopla, I turned her on to Hoopla. She gets like everything, and I was saying, gee, we've got a town of twenty-seven thousand. It shouldn't compare. So I, I, I don't get that. So is it possible to renegotiate some contracts we have? Is it possible to maybe charge some fees a little bit with that? Any, I love to ask, are there any opportunities to increase some revenues?
Yeah, the, so as far as charging fees go, um, we, the, the sort of purpose of the library is to keep everything, um, accessible to everybody across the board without any financial barriers. So we really do our best to reduce fees as much as possible, um, uh, you know, as we try to break even on consumables as much as we can. Um, I, I don't think there would really be a great system in place to charge fees for specific services, especially versus others. Um, Hoopla is a particularly bad deal for towns, um, and some towns, uh, you know, do well with it, and they have the, either the funds to throw at it, or more likely what happens is that the communities just don't use it, so it costs them less money. Um, I think what's great about South Windsor is that they see these services and people use them, um, which costs us a lot more money and means that, that what, what we're spending on, on a service like Hoopla, um, might be a lot more than a comparable town is. Uh, but, you know, for example, our, we, we, we only spend about a hundred thousand dollars, a little more in materials total. If I had left the Hoopla spending as it was, where it was set last summer, um, that would have eaten up about half of our entire materials budget. And then at the end of the year, you have nothing to show for it. You don't own anything from it. Um, you pay, so Hoopla is a pay per circulation, and you pay, you know, anywhere between a dollar fifty, and for most items, it's more like five dollars per circulation. Um, you don't have any control over really what's in the collection, what's not. A big part of what we do as professional librarians is try to identify what our specific community needs are. Um, so as, as much as Hoopla is a great user experience, and I am still funding it, um, I know, I've just, what I've done is I've cut out the items that are at the highest cost, uh, scale, so the items that do cost five dollars per use. I've taken it down to, um, anything that's, uh, two dol- two dollars per use I'm allowing. Um, and that's, that's still a significant cost every month, um, that, that frankly could probably be spent in a, in a way that would more benefit the community.
Does Libby also cost money?
Libby costs money. Um, the difference between Libby, which we spend a lot less money on, um, we, we are in an agreement with the rest of our library consortium, so the group of libraries throughout kind of the ninety-one corridor that we, um, we share services with. So we cost share on purchasing items for Libby, so we have access to a wider library, but sometimes you do see that there are very long wait times for items. That's because there's lots of towns competing for the same thing. If we took the money that we were putting into Hoopla and we move it over to Libby, um, what we can do is own items specifically that are just for South Windsor residents while also sharing in a larger, wider library that other towns also have access to. Those items we can, depending on the licensing agreement, we could own permanently, or you can license them for a certain number of uses, or you can license them for a certain number of time. Um, so, so it's better in some ways. Some ways, it's, eBooks are very difficult for libraries. They cost us about eight to ten times what they cost, um, a, a, a normal citizen, um, and we've been trying to fight that battle, so it's a little bit more accessible for us. Um, but, uh, it is a service that we're, I'm particularly passionate about. I want to be able to offer it, and I... passionate about. I want to be able to offer it, and I, I hate that we have interested people and that I can't give them exactly what they want, but I, I really would like to. Sure.
Thank you, Kevin, for being here tonight. And this is your first budget that you're presenting to us. You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Very impressed. I've heard you speak before, but to hear you present the budget, it was very thorough, and I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. With the, working with the town on the computer replacement, is there any way that they can, with our IT department, get a better deal on the computers and the screen and stuff, and maybe tap into the state? However, our people get their computers?
We've already been working on them.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You guys are working on that?
Yeah, even before we were a town department, the IT department would assist us in purchasing items, so we got the same deal the town would get for purchasing them.
Okay. And then, what about like the copier machines and the larger machines? They'll be able to work through IT and getting service contracts or whatever they do with whatever they, the magic that IT creates?
[inaudible]
Okay.
It won't be the same contract as the town. Maybe we can, maybe once that contract renews, we can get on the exact same page.
Maybe there'll be a money savings there.
Um, yeah, there like, there likely will be some money savings there.
Maintenance and stuff like that, okay.
Yeah, we're, but we're working on a new contract for those.
Okay. And then, um...
And revenue hopefully, yeah.
The other question I have is, administratively, with staff, forgive me, because you mentioned you have X amount of full-time and X amount of part-time. I didn't write that down, but administratively on the library, I know you have the Library Board and you're the administrative, the director of the library.
Yeah.
And your administrative staff is what, a business manager and?
Just a business manager.
Just a business manager.
So, yeah, the two of us make up, you know, we, the administrative wing of the building.
Okay. And, and I'm sad to hear that that was reduced to part-time, and I'm sorry for that. And it, I do believe that, you know, you and the administrator running the library would be, a full-time administrator would be a good thing. So, it's a busy place.
It is.
And you can't do it 24/7, so, um, yeah, I wish the monies were back in there to help support the business manager or administrative person. Sorry, I might not, might be saying that correctly. I appreciate that. So, and, and to see that some of the items have been reduced i- is a little disturbing to me also, and you've made the reductions there, but the, you eliminated a position in the children's library, you said?
No, we've just kept it, because we had the budget shortfall this fiscal year, we haven't hired for it, essentially to save that salary. But I, I should be able to hire for it going forward. I wanted to...
I know. Isn't the money in there now, Mr. Maniscal? Could you be able to hire for that position?
It's...
In the bu- present budget we're in right now?
Um, yeah, so the, what, what Kevin is trying to say is that they had a shortfall in their budget, their current budget, because they had to pay for, I believe it was some payouts for retirements that occurred.
Yes.
So, when they paid those retirements that occurred, they didn't have the money to actually fund those positions that were there. In the budget that's being presented to you tonight, that funding is there for hiring that position. Those payouts have already been done, so my hope is that, once this budget's implemented, they can get started on hiring that position.
I would anticipate being able to hire it in this fiscal year. The, we're right about at the break-even point for that, but...
Yeah, yeah, it's a little concerning to me to think that we had a payout, that money had to be taken out of one line item for a position to, for the payout that wasn't presumed that wasn't gonna be happening, which prevented you from hiring, and, but now you're saying we're at the spot where we can hire. The funding is there for that?
Yes, the amount...
In this, in this present budget that we're in now?
Yes, well, in this present budget now, right.
Okay.
In order to, to make up for that shortfall, the position needed to be empty until right about the beginning of April.
Okay.
And so, at this point, we, we're funded to be able to have the position, but I wanted to, before I brought on an individual, I wanted to see how the budget process was going to make sure that the position was going to be still in there, you know?
And that position, the funding for this position, we hire this fiscal year that we're presently in?
Yeah.
And then, this budget that we're looking at, the funding will be there for that position going forward?
Correct.
Yes? Okay, thank you. I want to make sure on that. Thank you. Appreciate you, and all of your staff, and the Board of Directors. Appreciate them and all the hard work that they do, too. Thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions?
Don't see any more. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
That's all we have.
That's it.
That's it. Have a good night.